Thank you, Laura Lee. We'll go ahead and move forward with the recognitions and awards. And Ms. Ashley, I think you're the board representative this time?
Oh, they want me to go.
We'd like to welcome our special guests and their family members. And we're going to go straight to our awardees tonight, those we're going to recognize. We don't have any business partners with us here tonight. They've fallen to the, whatever the bug is that's been going around our community. And so our first award, person that we're going to recognize is Casey Kahn, who is a sixth grade student at Arbor Creek Elementary, and her principal, Melanie Demas. Don't be shy, please come forward.[51.01][51.01](Laughter). And Dr. Demas will stand up here with you. Casey is the youngest person in the United States to pass the Microsoft Certified Professional Test and the third youngest in the world.[71.06][71.06](Applause). She's in the sixth grade at Arbor Creek Elementary, and she spent a lot of time over the winter break studying and preparing for the exam, which was January 4th. And the exam covers installing, configuring, and administering Microsoft Windows XP Professional. She then set her sights on preparing for the Microsoft Certified Systems Administrator and Systems Engineer testing. On February 20th, she completed her second certification test for managing a Windows 2000 network environment, so she's one step closer to achieving her goal of Systems Engineer Certification. She's also an ice skater, an honor student, and a member of the Arbor Creek Guitar Club and the unofficial tech support for her classroom teacher.[134.91][134.91](Laughter). And if you want to know more about her, she has her own website. So please help us congratulate Casey Kahn on this outstanding achievement.[146.19][146.19](Applause).
Casey brought kind of a fan club tonight, so we've got several staff members from Arbor Creek and lots of Casey fans who do all go ahead and stand too. And I might add that Casey has also passed not only the second test, but just recently passed her third test as well.
Okay, for those who may not have heard that, on the microphone, she's just passed her third test, and she brought her fan club from Arbor Creek here with her.[192.34][192.34](Laughter). Now, we'd like to recognize another outstanding student, Kavya Shiva Shankar, fifth grade student at Regency Place Elementary School, and she will come forward with her principal, Mr. Greg O'Bourne. Kavya is a fifth grade student and the winner of the Olatha School District Spelling Bee, which includes students up to eighth grade. She prepared by studying about an hour a day, which she squeezed in along with her schoolwork, participation in math wings club, quest activities and projects, ice skating, Indian dance, violin, and swimming. And her principal says that she follows Regency Place's mission statement, "Take risks, take action, take pride." The next step for Kavya will be competing in the 79th Annual Scripps National Spelling Bee, held in Washington DC over Memorial Day, which will be broadcast on ESPN. And we have a certificate of recognition, and we wish you the best of luck and congratulations on your illimitable success so far. Do you recognize that word?[271.83][271.83](Applause). And she knows how to spell "illimitable." And do you have some family members here? Our next recognition is for Joel Ramsdale, who's the vocal music teacher at Washington Elementary School. He couldn't be with us because of a professional commitment, but we'd like to honor him for the outstanding award he's just received. And I'm going to ask Marge Banks, our district fine arts coordinator, to come forward in his absence. And you can stand next to Pat. Joel's been teaching for 14 years, with the last two in our district at Washington Elementary. His principal, Pam Burroughs, says he has a strong sense of community involvement and participates in theater, singing groups, and tutoring, and he brings that real-world experience to the classroom. One of the things he loves most about his job, besides the very collaborative atmosphere at Washington, is working with what he calls a wonderfully diverse student population. His students represent a wide spectrum of educational, socioeconomic, and racial diversity, and that challenges him to constantly find new and exciting ways to provide differentiated instruction, which means commitment to individual needs of his students. He's done such an outstanding job, he's been named the Kansas Educator of the Year in Arts and Disabilities by the Kansas State Board of Education and Accessible Arts, Inc., which is an arts organization that champions the arts for children with disabilities. Now, he'll be watching this on Channel 18 or on the district website, so let's give him a big round of applause.[387.22][387.22](Applause). And since Marge is up here, I'm going to ask her to introduce our next two speakers.
Thank you. In recognition of Marge being Music in Our Schools Month and Youth Art Month, we have two individuals to represent the performing arts and the visual arts to give you comments from two new perspectives. I'd like to introduce first Melissa Murphy from Olatha South.
Hello, I'm a senior at Olatha South. Yes. And I've been asked to come and speak to you on behalf of a student in music involved at the Olatha School District. I would now like to share with you a little bit as to why music is so essential to my life and to the schools. When you first learn how to read, there's an incredible feeling of joy, of accomplishment, and of pride. You thirst to read everything you see, to get praise and hear compliments on just how well you are doing. Children learn to read out of necessity, but those who love to read make it a passion. This is how it was for me, for music. Learning to read music was not an easy feat, but luckily, going into the fifth grade, I was already able to read both the treble and bass clefs due to my private piano lessons. But learning to read music and to play a new instrument with 30 other band students around me was an entirely different story. However, the director's energy, patience, and passion made elementary band so fun that once the novelty of playing a new instrument wore off, I still wanted to continue. With the bonds that began building at such a formative age and the excitement of starting something new, it has helped me form my hard work and dedication through all of my years in the Olatha School District. Band was a program where I could achieve, not on the soccer field, not in the classroom, but through an instrument. I could express myself so differently in a way that passion was unveiled through notes and phrases, not sprints and essays. Every day was a new challenge, learning new scales, vibrato, and technique. Music in the schools has been an incredible experience for me, opening new doors of mentors, fun trips, and best friends. Band is something that has etched my years of schooling. Playing in front of a huge crowd at a homecoming game, being the entertainment, is a huge rush, one that is only accomplished through hard work and dedication. This habit of effort and perseverance began in elementary school, was honed in during junior high, and nearly perfected in high school. As a senior this year, music still continues to be an outlet for me to express myself, and I would not be able to do this without all of the important directors I have had along the way. I look at music the same way I look at the rest of my life. And just like reading, I'll refuse to let the treble clefs disappear from my daily experiences.
Next, we'll hear a parent's perspective on the visual arts side in complementing the performing arts. Belinda Phillips is with us.
Hello. I am Belinda Phillips, and I have a son in the Distinguished Scholars Visual Arts Program at Olatha North. My husband Randy and I are very pleased with the education our children are receiving because Olatha emphasizes a well-rounded, high-standard curriculum. Our oldest, since I can remember, has desired to be an artist. He loved learning artistic techniques at Tomahawk to share with his father every night, who's also an artist. He loved, looked forward to taking specialized art courses at Frontier Trail. His motivation to do well in any subject improved once he connected the course to an art project. His frustrations grew, though, when he was unable to fit all the art courses he desired into his schedule. Motivation then became an issue until distinguished scholars and the e-communication opportunities at Olatha North. The visual arts has been the perfect venue for him to experience safe risk-taking, to develop a healthy work ethic, and to learn the true meaning of the pursuit of excellence. Dr. Trapp encourages creative solutions and multiple perspectives to artistic and life's problems through discussion and actions. He is learning to resolve problems by looking through the lens of opposing viewpoints. His science teacher commented on his above-peer-level discussion abilities, which I see as a direct evidence of applying skills he is learning in the DS program. You see, he is learning the value of process, not just product. The arts have given him opportunities to hone his complex problem-solving and decision-making skills, make judgment calls, and to become a self-advocate, which are higher-order thinking skills that you must have to be a successful individual. The visual arts program and his love of reading is broadening his experiences, resulting in improved writing skills, to the point that his pre-AP English teacher thought he could have been in the Language Arts Distinguished Scholars Program as well. Ha, and you laugh, but let me tell you, this is quite a compliment for a child who in elementary school refused to even write his name in first grade. To be an artist, to create art of interest as well as pleasure, you must be a lifelong learner of history, geography, sociology, science, and math. And the ON counselors and Dr. Trapp have worked diligently to give him that full, high-quality curriculum, preparing him for the best colleges in the nation while maintaining his motivation through the arts and computer courses. Thank you to the board's support. The DS Visual Arts Program gives him opportunities this year to go to New York City and visit the Guggenheim. He chooses now to see the antiquities at the Getty Villa Museum, and he's been encouraged by his art teacher to visit a renowned art school in Los Angeles. His dream of being an artist remains, seems realistic because of your support and guidance of Dr. Trapp, the DS, and the ON staff, and his counselor Janet Botnick. I am a gifted teacher at Scarborough and Redview. I have seen students express opinions through their creative and visual voice more eloquently than either speaking or writing could do. You see, it is important for every student to have the opportunity to excel, whether it is through academics, leadership, sports, or the fine arts. The Distinguished Scholars Visual Arts has been a motivator as strong as making a sports team or a debate team for our son. And most likely, it's the catalyst for improving and sustaining his academic endeavors, which he now sees as translating into dreams that will come true.
Thank you all very much. Again, one of the highlights of our meeting is to be able to recognize those who contribute so much to our school district. We appreciate it. This is a time where we receive public comments. Are there any people here wishing to make public comments? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda then. If you would turn to the next page in your report, I'll read through the consent agenda for our viewing audience. Includes minutes of the February 2nd meeting, the treasures report, accounts payable register, human resource actions, recommendations, a variety of student trips, some other items such as curricula in textbooks, instructional materials, some change orders, some bids, purchases, agreements, contracts, and leases. And that's all of them. Are there any items you wish to pull off and discuss or vote on separately? Give you a chance to look through this?
I have one question on the Warwick Street Benefit District.
I'm sorry, Mr. Churchman.
The Warwick Street Benefit District?
Okay, thank you.
Sure, go right ahead. I'm sorry.
Mr. Thompson, just explain to me, I understand the district's cost liability in that of $189,000. I know that the remainder of that is funded by others, and I just would like to understand exactly who those others are.
The other is the developer that owns the other approximately 45 acres within that development, the Heather Ridge Development. It's HRI Development Investment, it's the company we bought the land from, and they're responsible for the remainder of the, of the cost.
Okay, good, thank you.
Other questions?
I didn't have a question, I just, I just had a comment, and this is for, for staff. I noticed on, on a lot of the student trips that we partnered with other organizations in order for them to provide funding for these trips, and I noticed that we'd gotten a grant from the Coffin Foundation Honeywell. And I know I'll miss some here. I noticed that we had one from the Kansas Office for Community Service, from Can Bio, from the Bioscience Seminar Conference in Chicago. So my, that's kudos and, and congratulations and appreciation from, from the community as a whole for, for finding those sources of funds to send these, these students on these, these academic endeavors and having somebody else help us fund those. So thank you very much.
Good comments, thank you. Ms. Wilhelm?
Just one question, actually two. And one is that change order summary on the Claire Alternative Learning Center. There are two separate listings showing that. Is that pretty typical of, of this center and, and some changes that have, had to be made there? It seems to be kind of growing in, in the cost.
You mean on the summary page?
Yeah, C-25.
The first item is the actual change orders and...
Is that a total, then?
That is a total of the entire project. But I listed again at the bottom is the Claire Learning Center change orders plus the volleyball and basketball courts.
Okay, so...
Which was a significant portion of that amount of money. It's still a change order, but it was a large enough piece of the, of the change orders that I wanted to sort of list them separately so we got a little bit better idea of the actual day-to-day change orders in the project. It's still at...
That top number is still the total?
That's still the total, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. And the other question I had was on, on the companies that did the bids for roof repair, and I think electrical and plumbing, et cetera. Are those all one-year contracts and those are rebid every year? Okay.
Yes, we rebid them all year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Gilmore to approve the consent agenda as you have reviewed it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Parker seconds it. Any further discussion? Mrs. Madden?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion passes. We've accepted the consent agenda. Our next item would be responding to the action items. First one would be the proposed Bond 2007 Task Force, a very important task force. We've talked a little bit about this previously. It's been several years since we've had a task force like this, so it's a chance for us to reflect back on what went well on the last one and how to continue to improve it. You see some material on this, some potential membership, a study group. Another thing we want to make sure we involve is that if there are particular members of the community that you would like to have on this task force who maybe meet multiple roles, such as a, a parent who's a businessperson, who has a student in one of our schools, people like that, or people who just think would be very good to help us critically take a look at this, this whole bond issue, we would like you to send those names to Dr. All, and if there's more than one, please prioritize them because all of us, I'm sure, will be submitting names. With all of that, Dr. All, any comments you would like to make?
One additional comment. We've talked about sort of the task force that would hear all of the presentations, look at all the data, and prepare some findings for the board. Those findings may be from consensus, or they may be just telling you and delineating the issues that, that must be addressed or should be addressed. Secondly, there was, I think, a suggestion at the special board meeting to create sort of a, a subcommittee off of this group that would focus on technology, that would include some experts in that area, as well as some community parent representatives and probably some of our technology staff. So its composition might look a little different. So again, if you have in your suggestions of people that you might want to suggest in that area, keep that in mind as a place that would be helpful or appropriate. And then, I think in the area of discussion that, that Dr. Banikowski reviewed tonight, we may need a, a study group that reports back to this task force and the board that just looks at the academic challenges and acceleration. And that would be, I think, both parents and probably need some more district staff on, just simply because of the, of the information needed there and some community representatives and other stakeholders. So there's really an opportunity for, I think, more individuals to be involved. So you might indicate to me which of the individuals you're recommending might be best suited for all three, or which ones you might want to target to technology or one of those others. And then I'll try to, and if you put them in order, as Dr. Drummond said, that will help make sure I can balance your views across all seven of you, as well as making sure that we get all the stakeholder groups represented.
Good. And Dr. All, I'd like to say that I think this bond task force outline is outstanding. It's a, it's a very good start. I'd be interested in your thoughts and those of the rest of the board as to how we move forward with establishing the goals for what the board wants to see come out of this process. What does success look like? You know, certainly in my mind, there's the, the task to make sure that we are utilizing all the assets that we've currently got, looking at the schools and, and how we accommodate all those growth needs with the, the schools that we've got, and supplement those then with what we need. In addition to that, certainly I'm interested in how many years is this bond intended to cover? You know, how far out is this going to go? I'd like to know from my own edification, the last bond that we went through, how many years was that intended to cover? And I just think it's important that we establish some guidelines around that. I also look at the fact that I think history has shown that the community of Olatha does the right thing. They stand up and they, they bear their responsibility when, when we ask them to come forward. And I want this task force to go forward with not what you see a lot of times on these kinds of elections that we put before the community with the doom and gloom, or the scare tactics, or all the things that could happen in the event that we don't move forward with this. But I want us to move forward in a positive light and focus on what it is that we feel that we need to do, and I think that the right answers will come.
I would be open if there are some expectations from any of you individually as far as outcomes of the group, that again, you could email me that, and I'll help structure that into the first introductory meeting of the group to kind of set some of those expectations of outcomes. And I think then also, we might get some input from the members of the task force on what they would like to see as outcomes, and we can start from there at the first meeting.
Good. And do we have a, a target as to how many years this is intended to cover, or does that remain to be seen still?
I think that remains to be seen from the standpoint of, of, of the components that, key components that might be in a bond. And I think that's going to end up being a board decision, because I think we can say these are areas that may have to be prioritized in such a way that, that are sort of a must-do and, and a timeframe from those, and these might be areas that we would like to do, but whether that's a three-year phase in, a four-year, a five-year, a seven-year, you know, we could take a look at that. And then also, maybe implications become a factor in that. So, and our capacity to address, it's not just a financial issue, but it's a capacity issue. So I think you would see that in their findings when we come back.
Is it safe to say then not to, not to be leading in any way that the 20 mil cap that we have is somewhat of a, a limiting factor?
I think the, the 20 mil cap is something that should guide the structure of, of alternatives we provide for the board. I think what we would be able to say is, here are some things, and if you did this and this and this, you know, if, if that went above that 20 mil cap, then that would be a piece of information the board would have to decide, because this board can decide what that should be.
Sure.
And, and what the implications of that would be. Again, I, I stress the, the concept of findings for you, that this group can spend the time to study. And again, it might not be just a list of recommendations, but here's what we're giving you as some good study alternatives. And then the board is still going to have to wrestle with some tough decisions here.
Right. Yeah, good, very good. Thank you.
Okay, other comments? Thank you, Mr. Churchman.
I had some, but I didn't want to...
We want you to.
Okay, thank you. Dr. All, I would just like to make sure that as we select members to serve on this task force, that we would make sure that it would be representative of the diversity, all of the diversity that we have in our community. And so we make sure that we have, have all of our, our groups, all of our citizens represented. And, and it sounds like we've kind of, in the discussion process here, have added a couple task force, forces, and that it seems like we have one now for technology, and it looks like there are probably one here for curriculum and learning, some of the challenging... Could, could we get a schematic or something that would show us what, what's there? And also, along with what Mr. Churchman says, you know, some of the outcomes that we expect...
Right, we can do that.
And, and probably a, a timeline. I understand this, I know that this is a huge project, and I do not advocate that we should be in under any kind of time constraints. I know that the time is an issue, but, but by the same token, we want to make sure that we do a good process and use due diligence, and we don't want to put out an artificial timeline there and, and rush to a conclusion just because we set a, a, an arbitrary time. Okay?
I think we have an aggressive...
We need to set some expectations for that, so this doesn't go until...
Right. I think it's an aggressive timeline.
Okay.
But I think that's also part of the process as we get into the task force, that the task force members may say, we either need to create some additional meetings or subcommittee meetings, or we need to extend this timeline. So we'll be very sensitive to that.
Would it be possible to possibly make a, create a job description? I know when I go ask a volunteer to do something, they say, yeah, and then when, yes, I'll do that, and then they discover, once they made the commitment, that that commitment is a lot bigger than they thought it was going to be. I served on the Task Force 2000, and there was a little bit of attrition on that because it, it got to be somewhat tedious. But again, it was a big decision. That's when we went to the 21st Century Program, Concept, and so have a job description so people know what the time commitment's going to be, what the expectations are. And when, when they make that commitment, they need to make the understanding, with the understanding that they need to be at most of the meetings, because if they, if they start and stop, we're not going to get their input.
Correct.
Can we do that? And could we see a copy of that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to second the time commitment on that, particularly with the historical overview of the, the attrition on it. I think that we need to take the time to do this right and not move it too fast. That's, once again, no leading comment.
But if that timeline is in the job description, people kind of know, oh, this is a six-month commitment, or a three-month commitment, or whatever. It's not just one, one meeting and done.
Yeah. I think that, I think the, the position description there would be appropriate. I think, just like we do with Citizens Education Academy, we tell how many sessions, we have a, a sense of the, the dates on that. We will structure that once you take action. And then I think that will help determine the commitment level. There's a balancing piece of being too, dragging something out too long and losing people's interest and wearing them out. And there's also a feeling that if we rush somebody through something, that they feel that they haven't had the due diligence. And I'm hoping through the process that we can keep in tune with the task force, and if we need to extend it, then we will report that back to the board. We don't have to wait for one big report. We could do some periodic updates as part of our board reporting as we go along, too.
One last comment. And it should be stressed that the, the board needs these ideas. We need these ideas and this input in order for us to make good decisions. Okay?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, other comments? On the timeline part, I think it'd be difficult to go much beyond June from the perspective of vacations and summer activities. I mean, the attendance would drop off really quick if we do that. So it's going to be a challenge, but I think we can get her done.
Maybe through the middle part of June.
Yeah. One thing that I think, just in the process of this, and remember, this is a very basic timeline, you know, it's not fine tuned out, is that when we get to, let's say, the middle of June, there's going to be a period of time where there has to be work done by staff. And so that can be done and suspend sort of the meeting time and then bringing them back to give feedback on documents to say, is that reflective of what they said? So I think that we can build in some of that without necessarily having everyone have to meet through July, for example. And I think there's a little wiggle room in there that we've tried to build in so that if it does get delayed a little longer, that we still have an appropriate window of time to do what we need to do, so.
Okay, good thoughts. Thank you very much. Any more discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Dr. Drummond, I'd like to make the motion, but I want to change the motion. I want to add one word to the motion that's recommended here. Recommend the formation of the Bond 2000 Task Force to study current and future facility learning and technology needs to prepare findings for the Board of Education.
Okay, could you say that one more time, please?
It's right here.
Sure. Recommend the formation of the Bond 2007 Task Force to study current and future facility learning and technology needs to prepare findings for the Board of Education. I added "learning."
Deb, you have?
And that was a good add.
I'm sorry?
That was a good add.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Parker, second by Mr. Gilmore, to amend, to add on to the recommended action. Any further discussion? Mrs. Madden, did you get the whole piece of it? Okay. Want to make sure that was clear for our minutes. Any further discussion? Mrs. Madden?
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashley?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. Appreciate that. KANS Association for School Board Appointments. You see our current appointees and I certainly think we'd entertain those same folks serving again unless somebody wants to jump right in there.
Oh, no, no, no. We need to share the joy.
Yes.
Just kidding. I'd be happy to do it again. Of course, Mr. Pollan is not here tonight. That's how I got on here the last time, if you remember that.
That's right.
We could put his name down for both.
No, I'd be happy to serve again.
I did hear him express an interest, truly. I mean, I'm not saying that because he's missing, but I did at our February.
Which committee would he like to be on?
I think it was the Legislative Committee.
Great.
And you'd be willing to give?
I appreciate the consideration for continuation, but I would certainly be willing to visit with Mr. Pollan about that interest.
Okay, so Mr. Pollan and Mr. Gilmore? Anybody else? Because we can always vote on this if there are people who really want to do this. Okay, I would entertain a motion to have action to appoint these two representatives, Mr. Pollan for the Legislative Committee and Mr. Gilmore for the Nominating Committee.
I move that we accept the nomination of Mike Pollan to serve on the KASB Legislative Committee for '06-'07 and Kevin Gilmore to serve on the Nominating Committee for KASB for '06-'07.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mrs. Madden?
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion passes and Mrs. Wilhelm will be sure to tell Mr. Pollan that it was on your recommendations.
I will do that.
Thank you very much. Moving on to informational items, these are, of course, future action items for us to consider at another board meeting. We can pull these off and discuss all of them or any of them as you like to desire to do so. The first item is one that I put on there regarding the Board of Education's self-evaluation. We've talked about that. You've received some information on that. We did a little bit of research just recently to see if there's other sister districts in the region who do a self-evaluation. We actually were not able to find any other districts that really do this. There are some who do board expectations, which is what we kind of do as well in some respects, but not necessarily self-evaluation. There may be, we just haven't heard back from all the people that we've talked to at this point in time. So with all of that, you've seen the packet of information. Essentially, what it talks about is engaging with KASB to bring one of their consultants to help us walk through a self-evaluation process, particularly this first time as it is new for us as a board to do this. There are two parts to these activities. And the consultant would walk us through the whole process. It has been suggested that this happened at a special meeting, that we could probably hook into another special meeting we're having at a particular time. My suggestion to the board would be that we look into probably a couple months down the road to be able to get his schedule, our schedule together if you would so choose to move forward on this. And we can work with you on getting dates that might be available for the consultant if we choose to do this and your calendar and other special meetings that may be coming up for other board issues that we're having moving forward in the spring and the summer. Any comments or questions or thoughts or issues with process or? Buddy? Dr. All, anything you want to?
I just would commend the board for taking this on. All of us in the school district work through an appraisal process. You're setting yourselves up as excellent examples and role models to do that. We're an organization of lifelong learning and continuous improvement and I think for the board to want to move in this direction is a step that confirms that you are and will be and continue to be a high-performing Board of Education. So I hope that people understand that this is a very high-level kind of action on the board's part.
Thank you. And I think it fits real well with the book. And Mr. Parker, you may want to make a comment about that, that we received from Dr. All several months ago. It kind of fits in that whole context. And Mr. Parker, you want to say?
Thank you, Dr. Drummond. Five Habits of High-Impact School Boards. And I would like to suggest that we would study this fine book before we began the self-evaluation process so we knew what the five habits, I think we all do, but just as a refresher course and a reminder and use those as a part of our evaluation process to see if we're meeting those five habits.
Good. Thank you very much.
With that said, I would like for us to go ahead and, I'm supportive of this, schedule a time. It's kind of like when you're going to come on over for dinner sometime. If you don't set a time, it doesn't happen. So let's schedule a time, pick some dates and when we would like to do this. And I'd like to suggest possibly April.
Special meeting.
Dr. All, I don't know what, how many special meetings you have coming up.
Well, I was just waiting for you guys to go first.
If we could move it to May.
Yeah, you're right. May would be good. I'm going on vacation in April.
What if I have, when Mrs. Carpenter is back, had her put out some dates for you because I think it's hard right now for all of you to check your schedules? And we will work for a special meeting for self-appraisal either May or June? Is that too late, do you think?
No, I don't think so, particularly given all the other things we have to do and then trying to.
We'll give you some options and then you can weigh in on that to see what makes sense. And then that gives you an opportunity to read the book, ask questions. I've got a couple others if you want a second reading or a third reading, so.
And we have to respect the consultant's schedule.
That's right. We'll work with all of that.
This person as well, so I think.
But Betty Carpenter can, I think, put together structure for all of us on that.
Okay, by common consent, I think I'm seeing that from everybody, we'll move forward with the self-evaluation process and work with you on obtaining some dates. Thank you very much. The rest of the information items are before us. Health and dental insurance renewal plans. Any questions or comments that the board member would like to ask about here? Mr. Deener's here with a whole bunch of good information for us. Dr. All, anything you want to say? Don't want to?
Well, I think there's some good news here. It appears that health and dental rates, as we're going through this, may be among the lowest we've seen in a long time. That's based on our claims record the past year. Some of that's in our control and a lot of it isn't on any given year. That's good. Secondly, we have a subcommittee out of professional counsel that is working through this process, taking a look also maybe at some innovative ways to kind of structure the rates as it relates to individual employee contributions. And so we'll have more information to come back to the board if any of you have more interest in more detail. I know that Mr. Churchman and Mrs. Ashley are part of the support interest area for the RFP process for our brokers. So if you would like more information on this aspect of the rate process, then Mr. Deener would be more than happy to sit down with you and kind of fill you in on that so that you're up to speed on where we are on that. But we'll be bringing back information. We would like to be able to come back with a plan at, I think you said, the April board meeting. That would be about two weeks or a month ahead of when we've normally come to you. One of the challenges we have is getting about 4,000 employees enrolled before June 30th. This is one of those odd ways of our budget development process. We have to settle health and dental insurance rates, employee and board contributions before we will know where we are. So some of this starts putting a rock in the bucket that makes a commitment ahead of time. But in order to make sure that they're all enrolled prior to June 30th, we have to make those decisions.
And this being my first time through this, is it the intent or the strategy to come back with a proposal much like the board approved last year with a subsidy to try and keep the cost of the employees low, which I think was an outstanding move on part of the board at that time?
Yeah. I think that would be our intent. I think we're looking at how this can be very positive for the employee side and hopefully we can be very strategic on the board support side. We've got a little room to really look at this because we have a rate increase that's, I think you said, between 4% and 6%. We're still working with Blue Cross and our broker on that. So that's great. If you remember, last year, the overall rate increase was 9%. We started out higher than that and so Gary and staff worked very hard to try to make this reasonable. Our wellness plan is a positive factor, both on, hopefully on the side of keeping everybody healthy, as I'm sitting here with a cold. I obviously need to use the wellness plan more, but at the same time, that's a positive for a step that this district and board has taken in the past, a good return on investment. And there's some ways we could crank that up a little bit and maybe get some increased benefits.
Good.
Okay, thank you very much. Business and finance, talking about banking agreement, audit services. Mr. Gilmore, I think you were going to say something?
Yeah, I have one comment I wanted the board to be aware of, and item two there on audit services. And Mrs. Campbell, for your benefit, I've already mentioned this to Dr. All, but in light of some of the recent conversation about what I'll refer to as related party transactions, specifically banking relationships, I want to make certain that we have included in the audit this next year a focus on that, that whether it's disclosed separately or not. I looked in last year's audit report and there's no separate disclosure of any kind of related party transactions. And I really think in the, in the desire to be transparent in all that we do, I want to make sure our auditors focus on that and they may have already done that and maybe they deemed it not material to disclose, but I would like them to specifically address that and report that issue back to the board during this next audit. Thank you.
And I compliment Mr. Gilmore for that. I think that's an outstanding suggestion.
Okay, any other questions about banking agreement, audit services? Thank you very much. Transportation update? Any questions or issues with that? Anybody? Technology? Digital classrooms, wireless pilot project? Curriculum textbooks, instructional materials? Student trips? And the last one is nutrition, wellness councils, purpose, mission, goal statements?
Dr. Drummond?
I thought you might speak to this one, Mr. Parker. I was hoping you would.
And I would like my fellow board members to be patient with me on this. I know that we, and fully understand and appreciate that we have, as a board and as a staff, a lot of issues on our plate. We've heard, we've heard those for the last six months. But given that, I do not want us to lose sight of or to misunderstand or to minimize how important this policy is. And I have, I would like to make the following suggestions. And Dr. Hall is leading that task force and I'm helping, I'm participating in that. So these are things that I've already discussed with Dr. Hall. But in the rationale for inclusion, the purpose issue, I understand that there's legal requirements that we implement this policy. However, I believe that we should emphasize that this policy is critical for the academic success and health of our students. To that end, I would like to have a presentation of the research which indicates that students who enjoy a healthy lifestyle experience academic success at a higher level than students that do not enjoy a healthy lifestyle. We should recognize that this is a, an excellent policy for the physical and mental health of our students. If we just indicate that we're implementing a policy to satisfy the legal requirements, then I believe we are missing the most important reason for adopting this policy, the health of our students. When this is presented to the board in April, I would like to make sure and include several parents who have worked on this health council as well. And I have the vision that the district can be a community leader promoting healthy lifestyles for our entire community, that this is just not a policy that we're going to implement and put on the shelf. To that end, I would like to see us proactively promote our policy with community partners. I would also like our community relations partners to promote and communicate our policy to the greater community and that this is a great opportunity for the district to be a change agent and a leader in our community in the area of healthy lifestyles. We can be a leader to affect the lifestyles of our greater community. We need to be out front with our policy. It's not something that we should, I have a saying, people are down on what they're not up on. There's a lot of work going into this, but I would hope that we would develop an effective informational brochure that highlights our purpose, mission, and goals for the Nutrition and Wellness Council as we move forward with this.
Great thoughts, Mr. Parker. Appreciate that. Anybody else?
I wanted to add a comment in this regard and the information that we were provided focused primarily on nutrition. And I wondered if the exercise piece of this, the physical education piece of this, is going to be addressed separately and how that's going to be handled. And I say this because in line with what Mr. Parker has just commented on, with which I totally agree, I think we might be wise to do a review of our PE programs and include more aerobic exercise in our PE programs.
The, there are four main goals and physical activity is one of the four main goal areas. And that is an area that is being researched and looked at and an area that goal statements are being written. So this will be a part of the whole project, the whole assessment that we're looking at. It's not just physical fitness, but it's just fitness in general, health and wellness. It's a pretty broad spectrum.
Thank you.
And just speak to that again to Ms. Ashley. In regards to the work of the task force, it's like everything we do is all complex. It's very detailed and there's just no one answer. And I have a great deal of respect for our physical education instructors and teachers as they are really important. They're critical to the health of our children, which relates back to the classroom if you read all the research and study the research. And now, I'm not advocating this, teachers and students, but we really need to add about an hour to the school day. And I'm not advocating that at all, so don't quote me on that. But you know, how do we get, we're barely, if you look at what we're doing for physical activity, we're what, basic? We're not even meeting the basic standard, is that correct? According to what the state requires? And so the question is, and we know all about academic rigors that are necessary in the classroom to learn reading and writing and math, which are important, how do we find more time for physical activity? It's a tough question and. It's a tough question, and without reorganizing the whole school day, hopefully we can bring a message that some of these things need to happen outside of the regular school day. And I think that needs to be our mission and our vision and passion in this, that parents become involved in this and that physical activity pieces, we provide those opportunities outside the school day, not to mean saying that we need to provide them during the school day, but there's some things that we can do that would provide better opportunities and more organized opportunities for physical activity during the school day. Gym, excuse me, physical recreation time is not just a time to skip out of.
We need a little more enthusiasm, don't we? Thank you, Mr. Parker. You're addressing a very significant issue that has very, very wide-spanning expectations from this group, as well as implications for our entire community. Appreciate that. Moving to the informational items, these are written reports that inform the board on a variety of topics. We can ask for more information here. We can receive some information from staff here, whatever your choice might be. Dr. All, anything you want to highlight? I know Mr. Gilmore's going to speak on item E, but is there anything on these others that you want to highlight, or any board members want us to pull something off and talk about it for a second, or you need more information on it?
If we're talking on the written reports, item A, just a comment there, that probably should have been placed in future action. That's the boundary options for the undeveloped land. And I think if you look at that, and we can have some discussion, this isn't something that we need to come back for action on next month, but probably in two to three months. So again, questions on that, but you've been provided an option for that undeveloped land that was west of Regency Place, and then I think there was also a request for other smaller parcels that might be remaining in that Regency Place area. And one of the options there does include distributing all those undeveloped parcels to existing schools. It does take some steps there of crossing maybe some thoroughfares that we have not done before, but again, this would be a known quantity prior to anybody developing it and anybody moving in. So if you look at that, Chris is here if you have any questions about it, or we can come back and do some additional presentations for your questions later.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any initial questions? Again, we'll consider this in the next couple months, get it wrapped up and taken care of. Expansion of the volunteer fee-based full-day kindergarten program, any comments?
Dr. Banakowski, do you want to provide a clarification on that, on that report?
Basically, the purpose of the report was to tell you that we were attempting to add two additional sites for our fee-based voluntary full-day kindergarten, and that was the purpose of the report. I think initially, the subject matter or the topic in the first agenda was incorrect, and it was something that had not been changed. So basically, that's our purpose in doing that, but also to tell you that we have some challenges in the future, which you've already heard, space. We have to continue to look at the fee structure because we know that the state is also looking at potentially funding full-day kindergarten, which may also make it a more popular program even than it is now. And so we just wanted to introduce that information to you, that that's a future study down the road for 2006, 2007. Mostly, we're just excited to say to you that we were hoping to expand to two of our elementary schools, and of course, based on enrollment, because as you know, this is a fee-based program for that other half of the day. So that was our purpose in sharing that information with you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other clarification needed? Our summer school program for 2006, as you know, we have an excellent summer school program. I think last year, it involved over 4,000 students, and we want to continue to move forward. This is a great opportunity for us to reach out to some of our external mandates in terms of extended day learning for our students. Any questions or comments you want to make about this, Dr. All?
Well, one thing, I would just want to reiterate for the public and the board. I think there was an article in one of the papers that sort of implied that there had to be funding from outside the district or by tuition only to attend. And I wanted to reassure the board that we're not turning away any children at the elementary, junior high, or senior high program that need the services and qualify. And so we're working on that on a scholarship level, and we also know that there may be a time we come back and say we need additional support for these extended learning opportunities, and so we're working through that. But we do, through our programs, provide some of those services without always having all of the private dollars to do that because of the needs of the kids, particularly in reading and math. Another point of this I think is important is that for the children that are challenged learners, we also try to provide some enrichment opportunity to go along with it because they may be the same children that don't have an opportunity for the arts or for swimming or for computer class. And so Dr. Banakowski and staff are working to make sure that that's there for our children as well, who might be needing to work really hard in math, but may need an art class or a computer class or something else to go with it to help work with the whole child.
Thank you. As I recall, we do a pretty good job reaching out to students who we think would benefit significantly from this program and engage many, many of these students, which shows up when the assessment's down the road. Three-year-old early childhood special education programs, any questions? Or it's an expansion of a pilot project that we initiated? Mr. Gilmore, you want to report about the City of Willath, the Board of Education meeting that we had recently?
Certainly. We had the, Dr. Drummond and Dr. All and myself had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Copeland and City Manager Michael Wilks in an informal setting. We've passed out a memo that I prepared for you all if you haven't seen it yet, just to talk about items of interest to our respective governing bodies and to have a dialogue and start a dialogue about how we might work together on some of those things. The topics that we discussed were the proposed City Park at Frontier Trail Junior High School, and we've looked at that a couple of times here, and there was discussion about a potential relocation of that that might prove to be a better location that's going to be looked at by staff. We talked about the Mill Creek Center facility, and that we've got a study group working on that issue. The city offered to participate in whatever way they could in identifying alternative sites if we thought that was necessary for some of those programs. We talked about growth issues, which are very common to both of our governing bodies. And there was also a discussion about having the city address infrastructure issues and considering our schools an infrastructure issue when they're dealing with the planning, at the planning level for some of the developments that go in, and they're going to take a look at that. And then we significantly talked about having a joint meeting of the city council and our school board. We've proposed the date of June 29th, which is our scheduled last meeting date of this school year, which tends to be a very short meeting. And I talked to Mayor Copeland yesterday, and he indicated that they have communicated that date to the members of the city council, but have not taken any action on it yet. So you might want to keep that in mind in your calendar. And we plan to have future meetings along the same format together to hopefully promote common issues, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Question?
Sure.
Seems I'm working on the Mill Creek Center Task Force. What specifically, do we specifically need to take some action to communicate with them about, I know we're going to talk about facility and planning on having them come and visit with us, and maybe have somebody just join our task force from the city if that's a possibility?
Good idea.
So we make sure that we were communicating well with them and?
That'd be great.
Okay?
Think we can arrange that?
All right.
Good thought.
Thank you.
Okay, the last thing on this page is calendar events. Please make note of the various things going on. I just might point out, of course, April 6th, the board meeting, which you know about, and then the KASB Spring Regional Meeting at Baser Linwood on the 24th of April. And then always a very fun time, some new board members haven't experienced this yet, but our May 10th District Retirement Reception at Willatha South. That's a very, very fun time to honor the teachers and principals and janitors who have been with the school district in many cases a long, long time. It's a good event, so hope all of you can make that. And of course, the last day for students.
Dr. Drummond, we were handed as part of our materials tonight a summary report about the 2006-07 Pilot Program for Advanced Learning and Closing the Achievement Gap. And I think, Dr. Banakowski, you referred to that in your presentation. I'd like to just ask quickly, there's a website noted on here, because I had an interest in having a presentation on this, and I wondered if you thought the website would be sufficient to cover that information, or would you be better off having a presentation in the future?
Actually, the website is very engaging and provides a wealth of information.
Okay.
We certainly also, maybe after you have an opportunity to take a look at that, if there's additional questions, we'd be glad to bring a brief presentation forth.
Okay.
But we have had training already in the district to kind of look at this, and as I said, we've done a thorough research, and it appears to be something that would align us and get us to our targets we've identified.
Okay, great. We'll try that first then. Thank you.
One other thing I might mention, next Tuesday, March 7th, is the District Site Council meeting, and that wasn't placed on here. So that's where all of our site councils from 43 schools plus come together. We do a fall one, and this is our spring one. And so it's a very good evening, and if you can be there, that would be great, and acknowledge that. And you might let me know whether you're attending or not so I can look for you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Where is that at? Northwest?
Northwest, yeah.
Okay, the last thing we have on our agenda is room for an executive session. Dr. All, do you have a sense for the amount of time we might need?
Um.
Part of it, I'd say 15 minutes. Other part, I'm not sure.
My part, I would say 15 minutes. I think if we had 30 minutes, that would be plenty of time.
Okay, 30 minutes.
Dr. Drummond, I move to recess to executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, to return to regular session at 8:15 PM. It'd be 30 minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Mr. Churchman seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Mrs. Madden?
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes. We will adjourn and return back at 8:15.